Everybody and welcome to the City Commission Meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Before I begin, I'd just like to make an announcement. That the City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting commission meetings in both a virtual and in-person format. Public will be given the opportunity to listen to and view commission meetings at www.fortlauderdale.gov forward slash FLTV. And www.youtube.com forward slash City of Fort Lauderdale. As well as Comcast Channel seventy-eight and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel ninety-nine. To speak on an agenda item, I would invite you to click on the following link. That would be bit B-I-T dot L-Y forward slash virtual C-C meetings. To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. One, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distractive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, while you're on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the meeting broadcast. Which whether it's on FLTV, YouTube, Comcast, or AT&amp;T. If you're watching simultaneously to avoid delays in with the broadcast. I'll call upon you when it's your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers in the to-listen-only mode and you will be unmuted when recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and may either hang up to exit the meeting or stay connected and listen to the remainder of the meeting. Now, for those of you who are participating in our meeting for the first time, we usually begin with a pledge of allegiance. And then we do a roll call, so I'd invite everyone who's in the room and at home, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. So at this point, I will ask if there are any agenda announcements. And apparently there is one agenda announcement, which is M-one. The title and the memo districts are revised to include both District Two and District Four.
Mr. Mayor, there was a second one of those as well.
I'm sorry?
There was a amendment to a second. Commission Agenda Amendment that addressed districts as well.
I think that was a CRA item.
Oh, it was a CRA.
Those are CRA items, yeah.
Already handled.
And the Vice Mayor took care of that for us today.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
And Mr. Mayor, we'll have that walk-on as well, it's coming down soon.
Okay, great, well, we'll take that on at the end of the meeting. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Moritas.
Here.
Vice Chair Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie. Not present at the moment, Commissioner Sorenson.
I'm here, here.
Chair Trentalis.
Yes, here, thank you. So we have full attendance. So, at this point, I would ask the Commission to, for a motion to approve the agenda. And there are no, there are no ministers approve on this agenda, why is that?
We don't have them done yet from the last meeting. We had a short window because we had a Thursday.
Okay, and the Vice Mayor hasn't had a chance to review them.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll make the motion to move the item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the agenda is now approved. So at this point, as is often the case at the beginning of a meeting. Use this as an opportunity to recognize individuals, organizations, and the like through a proclamation or presentation process. And tonight, we have two such opportunities. And the first is a walk-on opportunity with Vice Mayor Steve Glassman. Who will represent, who, excuse me, presented proclamation declaring November twenty-first, twenty nineteen? Yeah, that's a mistake. Twenty twenty has unity in the community, the fifth annual grocery and turkey giveaway day in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I see that the esteemed Michael Albeda is with us this evening, is Pastor Black here with us as well? Or just, Michael, anyone else here with you?
It's, I'm writing solo right now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was able to recognize anyone that was here, so thank you. And this is from the Office of the Mayor in recognition of the fifth annual Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway. Whereas, on Thanksgiving Day, Americans come together to celebrate an American tradition. Grateful for the blessings of family, community, and country. And whereas, the Thanksgiving holiday reminds us to recall the spirit of compassion and mutual responsibility to all humanity. As we gather around tables surrounded by loved ones in humble gratitude for the given bounties we have received. Let us keep close in memory our fellow neighbors who have faced hardship and tragedy this year. And whereas, in an effort to make Thanksgiving better for those who would otherwise go without a traditional holiday meal. The Wayne Barton Study Center and the Good News of Christ Ministries in partnership with the City of Fort Lauderdale. The Fort Lauderdale Police and Fire Rescue Departments, Pastor Dwayne Black and the Sanctuary Church. St. Anthony's Homeless Ministries, the James Club, and scores of volunteers will be at the Sanctuary Church. To distribute groceries and turkeys to thousands of people. And whereas, the annual Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway epitomizes the spirit of generosity and compassion. Let us share our time and resources throughout our community with the less fortunate. Whether it be in the form of sharing a hearty meal, extending a helping hand, or providing words of encouragement. And whereas, although the current coronavirus pandemic has forced us to alter our system of meal delivery and face-to-face fellowship. We will not allow this crisis to dampen our spirits or prevent us from feeding our neighbors. And whereas, the mayor and city commissioners are related to issue this proclamation in recognition of the fifth anniversary of this event. And do thank all those involved in making this giveaway a success. Particularly, community and civic activist Michael Albeda for all of his hard work. Now, therefore, we, city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Do hereby proclaim November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, as the fifth annual Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway Day. And signed by our Honorable Mayor Dean J. Trentalis. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Albeda, would you like to impart with us?
I want to say thank you very much to the City of Fort Lauderdale, also the Fort Lauderdale Police Department. And the Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue for the outstanding services that they have lent in support for this annual event. It's the fifth annual event. We've been doing this for five years and it's grown. Dean, you have, Mr. Mayor, you have been at this event. April the eighteenth, when we had a drive-through, we had over thirty-five hundred motorists waiting to receive meals. And we expect close to four thousand people, excuse me, four thousand motorists. And I'm getting loads of inquiries from also the school board asking for meals and turkeys. So, once again, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Trentalis, on behalf of all of us, congratulations on your reelection. But also, at the same time, is we want to thank you very much to extending open hand. Mr. City Manager, you were there last year and we expect you, hopefully you'll be there again this year, working with us. And we invite every, each and every one of you, thank you.
See you Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you again, thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of our community. And thank you to the, for all the work you do on behalf of the Lakewood Civic Association.
My pleasure, thank you.
Our next presentation, we ask Jessica Wilkis, who's a Senior Management Fellow, who will have a recognition to make tonight. Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and everyone at home this evening. My name is Jessica Wilkis and I'm a Senior Management Fellow, as mentioned. I'm with the Office of Neighbor Support and it is my pleasure tonight to commemorate our seventh graduating class of the Neighbor Leadership Academy. They have made a commitment to continue to engage and serve our city even through the challenges of a global pandemic. I will quickly share, as indicated on this star map here. Our graduates tonight come from all over the city of Fort Lauderdale. And they each brought a diverse perspective from several different neighborhoods in our community. I also have a quick class photo of us in action and, of course, a list of our graduates that we are commemorating tonight. Along with their respective neighborhoods. For those of you that may not know, the Neighbor Leadership Academy is a five-week program that focuses on empowering neighbors throughout the city. The individuals presented here have learned valuable information about city government in Fort Lauderdale. And through the process, they have gained leadership skills and became change-makers within their own neighborhoods. Since the Neighbor Leadership Academy began in the spring of two thousand and seventeen with twenty participants. We are proud to say that we now have a total of a hundred and thirty-six neighbors who have graduated through the program. This would not have been possible without the support of the Commission, the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Association. And a lot of city staff from various departments to help us along the way. I would also like to point out that the academy is not just about learning, but it is also about putting into action what was learned. And as we come to the end of two thousand and twenty, this class is working to promote kindness in the city of Fort Lauderdale through a local mailing campaign. And there will be more news of the community project to come. But for now, I want to give a special congratulations to our Neighbor Leadership Academy Class Seven. And I would also like to give a recent graduate, Greg McAlune, a chance to speak on behalf of the program as well.
Thank you very much, Jessica, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me. Coretta Scott King once said, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate action of its members." Well, this neighborhood leadership commodity has personified compassion throughout its time. Our community project is to promote kindness and compassion to community. As Jessica mentioned, we will be sending a snail mail campaign with encouraging notes and messages to those who may have been most affected by the COVID crisis. The Neighborhood Leadership Academy represents all of Fort Lauderdale through a diverse array of individuals who share a common bond and love for this community. Everyone who participated has the simple mission of working together to make their neighborhood a better place to live. We learned about the inner workings of local government and how to effectively navigate the web, that is, the city organizational structure. Those who had concerns about issues affecting their neighborhood learned of the appropriate avenues to reach out in order to address their concerns. Led by the guiding hands of Keith and Jessica, the program days were fun and informative while staying on task and on time. Neighborhood Leadership Academy brought together all interests and aspects of Fort Lauderdale. And widened each participant's vision and scope as to the different issues affecting our communities. I'm appreciative of the City of Fort Lauderdale for hosting this leadership class and thankful for all city staff who generously donated their time. I would strongly recommend participation in the Neighborhood Leadership Academy to all my neighbors and all residents of Fort Lauderdale. Together with programs such as this, we can achieve greatness by creating a more informed and compassionate community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Greg. Okay, I appreciate it very, very much. And thank you, Jessica, for participating in this presentation tonight. And thank you all to the participants in Fort Lauderdale Seventh Neighborhood Leadership Academy. I really appreciate all of you taking part in the effort and you are our future leaders. And continue to represent your communities in a great way. I know that many of you are already involved in one measure or another, so thank you for your commitment and your, and your sacrifice. And, and our, our city is much better for it. So as we move forward, now we move on to the agenda items. And at this point, I would ask any member of the Commission if there are any consent agenda items that they would like to pull. If that is in fact the case, where an agenda item is pulled, a member of the public will be able to speak about that item at that time. Otherwise, if the item is not pulled, you would be given three minutes to speak regarding the agenda item before the Commission votes on all of them together. So I'd first like to begin by asking Commissioner Moritas, do you have any agenda item, consent agenda items you'd like to pull?
No.
None? Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner McKenzie?
I think I want to pull ten of them. I'm just kidding. I have none, sir.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes, Mayor, yeah, so I want to pull all events to follow up on our conversation.
Which items are they?
That would be item CM-one.
CM-one? Okay.
There's more than CM-one.
Yeah.
The other happens during motions, which we will discuss already without having to pull it.
So, CM-one.
Right, that, let me just double check. Yep.
Is it just one?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, other than CM-one. All the other consent agenda items will now be voted upon. Is there anyone from the public who is interested in speaking? CM-three. I see someone is interested in speaking on CM-three, that would be Kristi Alvarez. Kristi Alvarez, are you on the line?
Do not see anybody as an attendee with that name.
Was she on the afternoon? Okay, Kristi, you're not, you're not on the line, okay. All right, so, CM, okay, before we get to CM-one. Well, let's go right to CM-one now. I have a couple of people who have asked to speak on this. So Commissioner Sorenson, please share with us your thoughts.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear, I'd like to talk with the promoter and hear about their COVID-nineteen preparation and mitigation plans.
Okay, is RAV Communications on the line? I assume there's a person connected with that.
They are, they're recognized, star six to unmute, please.
And who is that?
We will find out shortly.
Hello, Mayor, this is Ari Glassman.
Hi, Ari.
How are you?
I'm good, you're here on behalf of RAV Communications?
I am, however, I'm, there are two events that were put together on CM-one. The Igloo Festival is the first, which I'm not affiliated with. And the Concorse Car Show is one that I'm working with. However, the event organizer also is on the line, Maria Janis, from the New York Concorse Festival. Who is going to be producing a first-year event with us.
Okay, so which will you be speaking about tonight?
The Concorse event.
Okay, you got, you got three minutes.
Okay, well, thank you. I signed up due to my participation in Vice Mayor Glassman's pre-agenda meeting yesterday. As I had announced, and most of you are aware of, come February first, I'll be working with the City of Fort Lauderdale Parks and Recreation Department. Overseeing the activations at the four open spaces on Fort Lauderdale Beach, which is a mouthful. And I have worked diligently with Marty Cassini at Broward County. On putting together standard operating plans. So not only for this event, which is on the agenda today to take place in February. But our farmer's market, which did just open up on Saturday. And everything that we're planning for the full year meets the compliance of the county to be able to be permitted. There were some discussions at the Vice Mayor's meeting on events and organizers. And so I do appreciate that this was brought up. And you really feel that it is the onus of that organizer to follow their standard operating plan. And much like when businesses started opening up and there were restrictions placed and businesses were fined. Or shut down for not following those guidelines. It would be nice to have a way of checking that organizers are following the plans that they put in place in order to obtain their permit. To activate within the city of Fort Lauderdale. And so my comment and suggestion was that further conversations are had, both on the city and county level. To come to an understanding of what can be done, so all events aren't looped into the same, I guess. You know, fear of being shut down because there are organizers that may not be following the operating plans that they put in place. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Maria Janis? Are you on the line, Maria?
I am, hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, my last name is pronounced Janachi, which, yes, and I'm used to it getting wrong, so I take no offense.
I anglicized your name.
Congratulations on being re-elected.
Thank you.
I was at the event, the Exotics on La Solis on Sunday. And I was very surprised, I was pleasantly surprised at how many people were there, which, you know, is wonderful for the event. But, but the fact that they were not wearing masks was, was a little shocking to me. Especially because I'm, I'm here in Fort Lauderdale now, but I, I live in New York City and we are, you know, closed. So we, and our protocol is very strict there. So I want to make it very clear that we will follow the plan, the COVID guidelines and protocol that we put forth to Marty Cassini. And we have a team in place that will make sure that that is taking place during our event in February. I realize the importance of it and it's, it's, I really felt the need to tell you that, you know, we're cognizant of it. And we will make sure that we follow the masks and the, the directional plan that we put in place where people walk in the right direction. And, and all that is very important.
Well, Maria, let me ask you a question. What methods are you going to employ in order to assure that the folks that attend are going to be reminded that they have to keep their masks on? Do you have people, for example, at the entry point, taking temperatures and making sure people enter with masks? And do you have people milling around or mixing with the folks that are going to be there to ensure that masks are kept on people's faces? What, what protocols are you going to follow that are incorporated in your plan that would give the city some assurance that, beyond just your promise tonight? That you're actually going to be proactive in terms of ensuring the compliance during your event?
We have, I have already reached out to my team, we have a group of volunteers that have committed to focusing solely on the COVID protocols. We have a, one entry and exit way, which is nice about this venue, is it's enclosed, it's contained. So the public will come in one way and, and exit one way. So, the public will come in one way and and exit one way. And we will have people there as well as other points on the rooftop. We we actually went up to the roof yesterday to look at all the points where we should have people to ensure that the masks are on, including the elevators and the stairwells, as well as the bathroom area. And our volunteer squad is taking it very seriously, so we 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 identified fifteen different points up there that we would make sure, not only our volunteers, we have separate group of volunteers that will be able to talk about the cars and then a separate group that will be there for the COVID protocol.
Now, do you have people that will be mixing with the crowd during the event that will be there to ensure the people are complying with the mask order?
Yes, absolutely.
About how many people will you have?
Fifteen people.
Fifteen people. And this is all going to take place on the rooftop of the parking garage?
Yes, on the rooftop and then what's called the amenities deck, which is all on the top area up there.
Okay, great. Anyone have any questions, Maria?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Maria. How many people are you expecting?
That's a great question. We we know that we can have a thousand people on the roof with the amount of cars and and the structure of COVID. And and I think that's on the high side. This, we are considering a kind of a soft launch for an annual event that we'd like to do there. I I'm going to say will probably be five hundred to seven fifty, but probably closer to five hundred people.
Is that five hundred through the whole then, or to anyone?
Yes, throughout throughout the day. We're we're looking at this being, because it's a soft launch, being mainly invitation only. And it's a very short timeframe from now to February, so we really want to make this more of a community event with community leaders, business leaders, get people there to understand what we want to do for the future in the annual event and and not open it to the public. If if we do that, it would be more of a sign up where where you would, you'd you'd be invited through applying to, on the on the website to be able to come up, but it's 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 more controlled, it's not a open to the public this year. I mean, next year, actually, February, not this, this this event.
This season.
This season, yes.
Okay, and great, and how are, how, what's your plan? How will you socially distance seven hundred and fifty people on the garage?
I think that the best way to do it is as they come in, which again, it's one entry point coming up from from the garage, fourth floor area, is we have on our plan, the walkway, how you will walk through, we will have directional arrows on the floor. We will have distance markers on the floor as well as these volunteers making sure people are walking through the the card display and the and the art displays. It's basically asking people, our volunteers asking people to just be compliant to the guidelines.
Okay, so hoping that asking works, I guess, it sounds like.
Yeah, you know what, this is very different from what we saw on Sunday. When you can come from all different points of different streets and people were, they weren't coming from one place, they were coming from all different locations off of La Solis. There was no way to control this and we have that control on the rooftop because you're entering in one location and and you have to check in to enter, so we can talk to the people and say, you know, and and reiterate the importance of social distancing and wearing the mask and having the sanitizer. And there will be a point of entry where we can talk to people, they're not randomly coming in, and I think that's the difference with this venue where it's it's more controlled.
Yep, okay, so let's let's do a little bit of role playing here, so I understand how you're going to approach this, so I'm me, you're a you're a volunteer there, you said you have fifteen volunteers. So, I go up to the front, you know, I wait in turn, I go up and I'm not wearing a mask, but I've got my ticket. So, I give you my ticket and and, you know, walk in.
Please, in order to enter, you must wear a mask, it's mandatory to wear a mask, we all want to be safe and healthy. We'd have to ask you to put the mask on and if you do not want to wear the mask, I'm sorry, you can't enter.
Okay, so you're going to deny my entry because I'm not wearing a mask?
I would deny it because this is real and this is serious and, you know, I like cars and I like cultural events, but I don't want to die going to one, I don't want to get anybody sick going to one, I would, and this is an invitation only event, if you're not responsible. We will make sure people know this ahead of time, that there is standards that you have to adhere to and and you know, if that's not something you want to do, then you should wait until this is all passed. You know, and and that's how I feel about it. Listen, this is, we all know somebody, I mean, I've had COVID, I know a lot of people who've had it. This is serious, this is real. I have struggled with deciding whether I want to do this event or not, just because I think it's important to be a responsible citizen. But I also know that we need to to continue our lives and 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 try to have some sense of normalcy. And we can do it responsibly and I'm very willing to responsibility. I think it's important and yes, I will deny people if they're if they're not going to wear a mask.
Okay, and what, tell me about your police detail or security detail.
So, we are still in the process of of organizing that because I, we we this is a new event and we thought we were actually going to do it this coming weekend and then we moved it to February, so we've been still in the works with organizing certain important components such as the police, we which is obviously needed. And I can get back to you on that.
Good, because you're obviously going to need a sizable detail there because a volunteer is not going to be able to remove someone if they need to go because they're not wearing a mask.
Yeah, I hear you. I I can, yes, I can say that they're not, they're not buying a ticket, they're invited. I think that, you know, a private security company is the the way we're going to do this, we we're still reaching out to them. I think we need that because yes, sometimes you get people who just don't get it and you have to handle it properly, but I think that's really the way that we would do it is with a private security company. But I don't, I don't see this as if you if you were buying a ticket and you paid money and you didn't, and I wouldn't give you entry, then I could see you being irreverent and, you know, and there would be an issue, but this is an invitation kind of situation, so and again, we would, we would rely on the private security company.
Okay, great, so just to kind of recap, private, there will be security there. There's going to be a limitation of entry points to one entry point, you'll have social distancing, not only getting into the event, but during the event, inside the event. Hundred percent mask requirement. Immediate removal if someone is not wearing a mask. Am I, am I all correct so far?
Yes, if they don't put on their mask, they will be, yes, they will have to leave, they will be removed. I I think most people that attend these type of concours, they would just put on the mask. Or if they didn't want to, they would leave, and I don't think it would be a problem, but I I don't see this as as a as a real issue, this is a the the this type of crowd is is there, people who don't want to wear masks are not going to go to this type of event, let's let's just kind of put it that way. And but there's always the loose cannon and we'll make sure that we handle that properly and
You know, you'll have alcohol served there and and people can get a little, you know, animated at times because of that, so.
Yes, absolutely, and and that, again, with the plan that we put forward to Marty Cassini, there's an area where the food and beverage is where they can only take their masks off for that for that purpose, and that's in an in an area that ensures that they're properly doing that, so to speak, you know, and 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 we have we have that all laid out on our plan. If you're not in the food and beverage area, then the mask has to be on.
Yep, I'm seeing the astroturf and tables, right, and, okay.
Yeah, and and so, you know, that that's something that and we will definitely enforce.
Okay, and then I guess lastly, you know, an expectation that the Vice Mayor can sit in a really cool car and get a picture taken by someone.
Of course, of course.
A nice car. Real nice. Okay, good, yeah, thank you, appreciate your understanding, why, you know, we all have a concern and just want to make sure we've got a plan. Chris, I also think it's important, and maybe this has been the case for other events, but that we have Maria, I'm assuming you're going to be onsite every minute there?
Yes, absolutely.
So, Chris, is it fair expectation that we have Maria's cell phone that, you know, as if concerns pop up, then we're in immediate communication with her? Chris Lagerblum?
Yes, Phil says yes.
Okay, for Phil, great, okay, great, so thank you, Maria, thank you, Ari, for for this one, and Luciano, it looks like you're part of this team too. So, Mayor, great, I'm I'm good with this portion of CM1, there's still the other event that I want to talk through.
Okay, we had one other person who signed up to speak, Stan Eichelbaum, Mr. Eichelbaum, are you on the line?
Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Good. Okay, I'm speaking as I did yesterday at the Vice Mayor's pre-agenda meeting on behalf of residents of District Two and Four. Residents in proximity to downtown, or we could call it the land of broken promises. We have a high share of age vulnerable property owners, while other cities have canceled crowd events and provided strong distancing and making an enforcement. We've been through the La Solis Art Show, which faltered in its afternoons with no ropes, no separation. While Coconut Grove Art Show has been canceled in Miami for next year, Art Basil's been canceled. We've been through the Boat Show, which dropped, did well supposedly at the show itself, but it dropped the mask usage on La Solis from forty-five percent to four percent as the signs disappeared promoting distancing and masking. The Car Show, which we heard yesterday at the pre-agenda meeting, where ninety percent were reported not wearing masks. And later today, somebody told me that's an exaggeration, it was under five percent of motors didn't wear masks. Now, the Sun Sentinel surprised us with the Brazilian Festival at Heisinga Park. Even during conference committee, several of you didn't seem to know it had been approved October twentieth. I'm guessing you also didn't know it was canceled by the City of Pompano because the Parks Department and Mayor didn't consider it safe to host. They gave it a late twenty twenty-one date as a possibility. We've got encouraged that the COVID rate during these festivals, following these festivals has accelerated, you can't prove it, but from three to eight percent in the county. We need to see, we've seen the sponsoring agencies not take responsibility for enforcement throughout all of these activities. I'm hearing protocols, which I admire, and I admire everything you said this afternoon. But I heard them say they couldn't estimate how many people would show up at one time. Whole Foods and Trader Joe's have counters at the front door to make sure there isn't excess crowd to keep maintaining distancing. I've heard and watched, observed people walking around with open beverages so that they can keep their masks down. The cups are usually hand, are usually empty. Other cities have protocols that food and beverage are congregated in a segregated area where they must finish whatever they're doing before they move into the regular crowd again. Likewise, the separation of the crowd, ropes don't work. I do appreciate, I think, the top of the parking deck works because there's only one other way out, and that's pretty painful, so. But ropes are not a separation from the pedestrian crowd and haven't worked. I am concerned that as we escalate, as we have a vulnerability of a great shared residence proximate, and people have said to us, hey, you know, just don't go to the event, but that doesn't really work, we have workers who are going to gravitate towards the event for their food needs, because it's in a commercial district and other needs.
Can you?
They're going to come back with residents and mingle with her crowd, thank you.
Conclude your remarks? Can you please conclude your remarks?
I did.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your for your contribution. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Eichelbaum? There being none. So, Commissioner Sorenson, you said you had some additional questions regarding the other events.
Yep, I want to talk to the promoter of Igloo Cooler Festival, please.
I don't know who that is.
Who is that? I don't see the name that you just provided me, I don't see it on the list.
I'm I'm looking at CM1, Exhibit One.
Jesse Gutches.
Can we go back to the other one, Commissioner Sorenson? I did have a question about that. I'm sorry, and I guess Maria, maybe she's still on the phone, Marie, and Ms. Glassman, thank you too for the input you gave us. I did want to say, maybe I'm missing this, Chris, or when I look at the memo, the Commission Agenda Memo, it says that everyone is submitting plans to Broward County to get approved. It would be helpful, do we have a copy of those plans, or could we also get those as part of our backup? Am I just missing something?
No, I presume we could, I just, you know, they're the, by now order, the approving authority for the safety plan, so.
Okay.
We've been trying to just handle it from the event perspective on our end, knowing that they're the ones that are going to be reviewing the safety.
It seems like the questions we are asking could get resolved if we could just see a copy of the plans they are submitting to the county, so we kind of understand what's going on. And in my mind, I'm thinking, and maybe I'm just assuming, I'm thinking, I'm thinking all these events are ticketed and there would be a limited amount of guests per hour. I've been on the top of that parking garage and seven hundred and fifty people all at once on top of that garage, that would be a lot of people. And I appreciate when Ms. Glassman talked about SOPs. And I'm thinking that there are a certain amount of people per square feet that we allow, or I'm sure the county probably has some kind of SOP on that. So, you know, if we just measured it and then we said blank can come at every hour. So, I'm just once again assuming that we are ticketing everything and that you are going in for maybe an hour or two at a time and then you're leaving. But I I could be wrong about all that, so I'd probably like to see a copy of the plan submitted. I'd like to.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's Phil.
Hey, Phil.
Will you get off of that? Let me explain how the the county review works, so.
Okay.
The plans that, besides the marathon tonight, the plans are still with the county, they've not approved them, so I guess the the concern would be if we put the plans in in tonight, they're not going to be, they're not updated and approved by the county. So, the promoters are going back and forth with Marty at the county to get them to a place where they need to be for the county to feel comfortable, so my concern would be if we put it in here tonight and it has not been approved yet by the county, then you'll see probably old information that's not updated, so the only, the only thing I think could help would be once the county has approved their plan, then we could share that with the commission if that's then we could share that with the commission if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I almost probably still think what I'm saying makes sense because if I don't like the plans, I can, I cannot approve it too. And so it doesn't even go on to the county, right? Or we as a body could not approve the plans. If we don't like them, I know we're not approving the county plans, but if we don't feel a level of comfort by allowing this event in our city, we cannot allow it. Is that true? Right? Yeah. So I think it's okay if we do see the plans because we could say, I don't like the plans also. And before the county even says, I don't like the plans. That being said, the county could cancel this and we've spent a lot of time talking about it, which is another issue. So I still think it may help if we see it because I think we as a body have the responsibility to approve events that we think are safe. And I don't know if these things are happening that I'm running through my mind. Then I'm also looking at, you know, music on top of the parking garage. I don't think, have we had music up there yet? This is probably one of the first events we've had, right?
Correct.
And, um, just know that the neighbors on the other side are going to be screaming by about ten o'clock when that music's going right across the water to Idlewild and everywhere else. But I'm sure that they're probably used to that too. So that, that could be a little bit of a concern. I do know our noise ordinance is ten, but uh, that, that music's going to carry from the top of that garage. So.
Well, Commissioner, I think, I think you bring up a good point. And, and Commissioner, we could say there's a sequencing that has to happen here. That events need to get approved by Broward County and only then can they come forward to us.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that makes sense, Ben, because I mean, or, you know, Commissioner Sorenson, I don't, it seems weird to debate it and we don't really even know what's going to happen. And even we have heard preliminary uh, result, uh, you know, reports that some events may get canceled or not approved from the county after this weekend and stuff. So I don't know. It's hard to.
Yeah. Cause Commissioner, why I think that might make sense is because the county commission can approve an event and we can deny an event and the event will not happen. The county commission can approve an event and we can approve that an event would happen. We cannot approve an event and the county commission disapprove an event and this event still happened.
Correct. So we have, our order probably is wrong, but I know the event planners would like to know what we think, but it might not matter.
Yeah, Chris, what, what are your, what's your take on that county commission preceding, county commission approval preceding our discussion?
We can certainly handle it in any order, but my concern with that, just to first pass is that from a timing perspective, that's going to be very, uh, hard to line up and make sure that we have it, that we have a meeting, um, after the county takes action. So, that would be the risk is that the county would approve it and there wouldn't be a commission meeting before the event was scheduled to occur.
So this is Phil to follow up on that thought. The, the Thanksgiving one that's by American Social, it's on tonight's meeting is the twenty-seventh of November. And that still has not been approved by the county. So to the city manager's point, if, if we wait for the county to approve it, we can do that. But in this case, this, this event could not happen because we won't have a, a, a meeting prior to that event, prior to after hearing from the county.
Yeah. And I think, I think it's a fair point, Phil. I think we can have extended waiting circumstances and some flexibility there and still have the kind of stated expectation, get county approval first, then come to us.
Well, keep in mind that the county approves certain things and we approve other things, like the county is not going to talk about amplified music. They're just going to pass on safety considerations, which of course are obviously COVID nineteen considerations. So, so we do perform different functions and, um, but obviously if the county finds that the safety precautions are not adequate, and it never really gets to us. So, um, but anyway, so.
Right. So that's exactly my point.
Your point is well, you're right. Taken. Exactly. Um, okay. So where are we on this then?
Okay. So we need the second half of, uh, one.
So we have, we have Igloo and we have concours.
Yep. So we're.
Second half of one is concours.
No.
Yeah.
Igloo.
Well, it's Igloo and then concours. That's the way it reads.
We already did concours.
Right. And we just did concours.
Well, we didn't vote on anything yet.
No.
So what, what would you like to do with regard to CM one?
I want to hear the rest of CM one, which is Igloo, please.
Okay.
From, uh, from Igloo.
So the promoter who said he would be on the call is Jesse Gutchens. Gut, G U T C H E S.
Do not have that name on, on either as an attendee or a panelist.
Okay. So there's no Jesse Gutchens on.
There's no representative from.
I do not see Jesse Gutchens on. No.
So that, the first event commissioner is January seventeenth, so we can pull that off if you'd like to.
Please, Phil. So Mayor, what I'd move is to remove, uh, the Igloo Cooler application um, for, to be, to come on the, uh, agenda, uh, the next commission meeting in two weeks. And that we move forward to approve the concours, uh, application and event.
Okay. So, uh, CM one, uh, has been moved, uh, uh, as amended, uh, to approve the Fort Lauderdale concours and to, uh, defer the Igloo Cooler Festival application for the, for, for this sec- first meeting in December.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Well, let me just, let me just put a second on the floor. Does someone have a, someone second?
I can second it.
Second? Okay, yes.
Uh, my question, I'm sorry, when is the event? Isn't it that event in February?
February.
It's a, it's actually a series of three events, three dates.
Can I?
January, April, and July in Mills Pond Park. It's a Caribbean festival on three different dates.
What, the concourse, uh,
She's talking about the concourse.
Yeah, concourse. Commissioner Sorenson.
Oh, that's February thirteenth.
Do we want to do the same thing for concourse that we're doing with Igloo and just let the county take a look at it first and then bring it back to us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good approving this. If, if the county does not approve concours, then it's not going to happen.
Okay, correct. And I did see, it looks like on their backup, it does say a hundred and fifty people like at a, at one time. So, uh, you know, I just hope we do have some confirmation that it's not seven hundred and fifty at one time. That's a little, little dense.
Okay. Also, um, well, I think the application actually says three hundred people.
I thought I read just one fifty sustained.
Correct. You both have that right. It was three hundred and, one hundred and fifty sustained.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I have another concern that one of you brought up about the amplified music at ten o'clock. I think it was you, Commissioner Moritas. I, 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 I really feel for the folks that live, um, in, in, uh, in Seven Isles and also Idlewild who, who, you know, I just think ten o'clock is kind of late for amplified music in a, in a neighborhood that is, is seriously impacted. Um, I would ask that we reduce that to nine o'clock. Does anyone have any thoughts about that? Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor, this is your district. What are your thoughts about this?
I actually have not, um, heard comments about that time. And it's not as if the folks in District Two are shy and letting me know how they feel about just about everything. So, but I have not heard anything about the time of the music.
Thing is, you're not going to, you may not have heard anything about this event.
No, I mean, in general of music, but so you're saying you want to do that for all events. Obviously, we can't just do that for this event. That would be a new policy for all events.
Well, we've not really, we, this is the first event in the, uh, at this site. And, um, I don't want it to be marked as a, as a, as a, uh, it's a negative event venue right off the bat. I think this is the first time we're actually using this. And, uh, I'd like it to, you know, I'd like it to start, you know, on the right foot. And I think we should, we should start it out slowly and carefully so that people don't object to future events. Um, uh, because they're, they don't want to be impacted by the noise. And so I'm wondering if we could just reduce the hour.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, by one hour. Would you accept a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to make sure though, that we're going to be treating everyone equitably. So if we're doing that for this event, I, I don't want us to say just this event, nine o'clock, and then we come back and other people, other events at the same venue go to ten o'clock. I mean, I'm just concerned about making sure we treat everybody equally.
Well, I think we should start out at nine o'clock and we'll see how it goes. If it turns out that, that it's working out okay and the neighbors are not upset. And, you know, keep in mind, you have two, you had several, uh, you know, you have Leisure Beach, Leisure Beach South, you have Portofino, you have Jackson Tower, all people who would be immediately impacted by, you know, amplified music as well. So, uh, and it's going to echo off those buildings. So.
Yep. No, I understand a hundred percent. My, again, I just want to make sure that everyone is treated equally that comes before us for an event at this site. That's all.
Well, we're equal before the law. Okay.
Excellent.
Mayor, the vice mayor is just, he's just putting on his dancing shoes at nine o'clock. So.
You know, Commissioner Sorenson, I'm just waking up from my nap to get going for the night at nine o'clock.
Exactly. Just, just, we're stretching, you're getting ready.
Can I ask staff a question?
Ben's sleeping.
Commissioner, that's a visual. I just wish you did not, but.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My question's for staff and, uh, uh, and I'm looking at the height of the garage, right?
Right.
Phil, have we tested music up there and how it amplifies at that height? It may not be as big of a, 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 an issue as we think it might be. So, um, have we tested anything to see and have someone go on the other side to Idlewild and Seven Isles and stand down at Jackson, see if the music's amplified will really be, um, um, what we're anticipating, uh, for this event or for future events. I mean, we did design that parking lot, uh, to host events at the top level. And, um, I know we don't want, you know, Tortuga or anything that, uh, there, but I think smaller events like this. And have we tested it and, or can we test for, for, for amplified music before we start, um, taking the time away that, that, that the promoters are asking for?
So Commissioner, we have not tested it. We, um, we could probably get with code and try to do some tests. I think the challenge is that, as you know, every, every band and every instrument is going to be a little different. So.
Yeah, I know that, but I think we just took some music and really amplified it. Because what I'm voting down there, I mean, you have boats, you know, cranking. It depends on what side you're on, whether or not you hear it. So, I mean, there's a lot going on before that sound gets over to the other side. I don't want to, you know, impede on anybody's, um, privacy, but I think we just need to test it so we know in, in the future. Um, how it echoes, how it travels. So we'll know ourselves.
Yeah, but, but again, I, I, I think the challenge is going to be, Commissioner, I just don't want to give anybody false hopes that if someone's up there with a, a guitar or somebody's up there with a bass or someone's up with their drums, I just don't know if we can test every one of those different ones to understand.
I'm not saying test them. I'm just saying, just get a test for yourselves and we'll get, we can have some type of a, a measuring stick uh, moving forward. And I don't want you to test every guitar and every drum. Just take, you could take, uh, Heavy D up there with, 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 with the speakers and just crank it and just see how the sound is at that level.
Well, why don't we let this, Commissioner, why don't we let this be an experiment and see how it works out? And if it turns out that it's not obnoxious to the surrounding area, then, then at least that's be the test.
We'll come back to massage. Okay.
Yeah. All right. Good.
Because what I would hate to, I would hate to give one person some, an inception and not others. So this is try it.
Yeah, we'll try.
Didn't work. The rest of them got to pay, right? Right, Steve?
Yeah, let's, I mean, so you leave this one at ten, and if it absolutely is horrendous, then you know that you need to make adjustments. That's all.
This is at nine, Steve, Vice Mayor. This is going to be at nine o'clock.
This is at nine. Well, then how's that, how's that the experiment then?
So it was supposed to be at ten.
Experiment is to see whether it's, it's obnoxious at seven, eight, or nine. I mean, let's just.
They're asking, they're asking for ten though, Mayor. So let's, let's test it at ten and then we scale it back if it didn't work.
That makes more sense.
Well, I just want you to be the recipient of the complaints that.
He is. He's the, he's the vice mayor and the district commissioner.
Yeah, I understand. But, uh, we've had s- serious complaints, especially in the Idlewild area when we had events at, uh, the Behemar as well as the, uh, the Swimming Hall of Fame. And, uh, this is no different. Now, unless this is going to be a chamber orchestra, which I don't think it is. You know, I really feel that we should, you know, be smart about this. This is not like, this is the first event that's ever been, uh, that ever had amplified music on the, on the intercoastal. Uh, I really feel that we owe it to the community of surrounding it that we should at least bring it back to nine. I don't think it's going to impact the event. And I think that it would be very respectful to people that live in and around that area.
I have one, one comment. Uh, I get this complaint from a restaurant in District One that's on the water and the condo right across the water hears it like it's, you know, in their living room. Uh, and it's, uh, so one, two issues are, you know, one is decibels. So I don't know if there's any way we can say, yes, you can have music, but it can't be above certain amount of decibels. Maybe that's one way to kind of regulate it.
Well, we already have that.
Do we have that already? We, oh, yeah. Okay. But, um, I don't know. I, and I agree probably with the mayor. It's, it's just so loud that it's just like it's in your house when you're, when you're right there that, um, I just think we should, we should limit it at first before we get going. There, there's really no sound barrier when you're on top of that parking garage. It's different than even at the Swimming Hall of Fame. You know, at least there's something around there to absorb some sound. I think it's going to travel.
All right. And we can, Mayor, we can, we can say nine o'clock and then, you know, folks can go, Vice Mayor, some other folks can go out there. And if they think it's great and all good, then, you know, you can call Maria and say, hey, go to ten if you want. I mean, there's, there's, there's options there.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. That's to, um, continue the Igloo Cooler Festival uh, till the first meeting in December, which is, what's the date of December?
December second.
December second. And to move forward with the Fort Lauderdale concours application with the amendment that the amplified music be, um, limited to nine PM that evening. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Wait a minute, wait. I have another person that's signed up to speak. Is Kamar Doughty, is Kamar on the, uh, line? Kamar Doughty from Miami.
Is recognized.
KJ Marketing. Mr. Doughty, are you on the line?
The name is showing and it's showing that it's not unmute.
Mr. Doughty? All right. Let's just move forward. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes. And the, uh, item is approved as amended. Uh, would someone like to introduce the balance of the consent agenda?
Introduced. Someone want a second?
Please second, anyone?
Second.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie? You're on mute.
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes. And the rest of the consent agenda items have been approved. Uh, M one, a motion approving event agreements, road closures, Friendsgiving Weekend Get Together at the Fourteenth Annual Cleveland Clinic thirteen point one Fort Lauderdale Veterans Day five K. Assume that's for next year. Um, we have one person who has signed up to speak. Matt Lorraine, is Matt there?
Matt Lorraine, I see the name.
Matt Lorraine?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, Matt, how are you?
Good, Mayor. How you doing?
Very good. How, you have three minutes.
Okay, I'm just, uh, made myself available to speak on the thirteen point one Fort Lauderdale event. Uh, I'm the race director along with Josh Stern. So I figured you would have some questions and, uh, so I just wanted to be here to, uh, walk through the safety protocols and the event.
Or run through as a case maybe.
Run through. Correct. Yeah, our event was just, uh, canceled for, because of, uh, the tropical storm Ada. It was supposed to be last, uh, last Sunday. So we got postponed until December thirteenth.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, hi, Matt. This came up at my pre-agenda meeting last night. Um, representatives from the Central Beach Alliance said that they've had no discussions with you about the event. And I know I say this a lot during events and when folks come before us, but I know that there is an event process where people go to a committee, but I still think it's always, uh, prudent to just touch base with neighborhoods that it's going to impact the most. prudent to just touch base with neighborhoods that it's going to impact the most, and I just think that it gives a courtesy and it's a good way to communicate with the neighborhood.
Understood, I will get with, uh, Captain Pat Hart to, uh, he has an email chain of, uh, a lot of those, uh, committees, so I will get with him tomorrow to, uh, get the ball rolling.
That'd be great, because I know this actually goes, it starts, I guess, at the La Solas Oceanside Park, and, it actually, I think, goes up as far north as Commercial Boulevard, correct?
Uh, we're actually turning around further south of there, uh, we're not gonna hit Lauderdale by the sea, but a little bit, a little bit south of Commercial, we're using the northbound lanes, uh, southbound traffic will be unimpacted on A1A. So anyone, uh, north of Birch, uh, have, will have access to, uh, travel south. And it'll be counterfloated, where there's two lanes, it'll be counterfloated in both directions on the southbound side.
Okay, it's great, I, I, and I, just so you know, you know, neighborhood, basically neighborhood organizations like the Central Beach Alliance, they meet pretty regularly, in fact, they meet this Thursday, it's, it's just nice to touch base so they can let the membership know, and it's coming, and what it is, and it just, uh, it, it, it just makes for better neighbors, so thank you.
Oh, no problem at all, thank you.
Would you like, would you like to move the item?
No, hold on, I've, I've got some questions.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Matt, how many racers are you expecting?
We are capping this at a thousand, our expectation is for eight hundred, and that is from pers- for some perspective, that's down from two thousand people, so we're cutting our potential audience in half to keep our, our arms around the crowd.
Okay, what, how many spectators are you expecting along the sides of roads and so forth?
We are actually discouraging spectators.
How, how are you doing?
Most of our, you know, communication prior to the event, um, being that this is gonna be our second, you know, go at it, we've already communicated to all the runners. So just to back up, uh, Marty Cassini has already approved our, uh, safety plan from the county. Uh, so just bringing you in, so we're using the La Solas Oceanside Park as our start-finish area. So we've already encouraged everyone, that social distancing will be encouraged at the park. Uh, mask mandatory at the start and finish area within that park. In order to reduce any congestion of the start line, because most running events, everyone just crams into a start corral. You know, uh, you've seen the start of the A1A marathon, and then it's just go. What we're gonna do is ten people at a time, six-foot radius around each person. Those ten people with masks on, then leave and go, and then ten seconds later, the next group comes in of ten people, they go, and likewise, until we get all people off. Uh, when they come back, masks will be made available to people, or they can wear the same mask that they had, uh, to come back into the finish area. Uh, we are not encouraging people to hang around, much like most of our other events. Uh, we're not having an award ceremony, people will be given a bottle of water, a banana, and some prepackaged food, and that is pretty much gonna be it, so this is pretty much all about the run, as opposed to, most runs are the run plus the post-race party.
Matt, great, thank you, that, that helps. Um, Vice Mayor, are you defending your title again in this race, or are you allowing someone else?
I actually wanna have, uh, others have the opportunity, so I might just be one of those spectators that won't be allowed to watch.
Okay, you're sharing, you wanna share the spotlight, okay.
Thank you, though. Thank you, Commissioner.
Maybe you can walk from the balcony of your, uh, home at the Sapphire.
Thank you, Mayor.
Exactly. Um, thanks, Mayor, uh, Matt, thank you, that, this, I've, this sounds appropriate, and I think Matt's doing a good job taking the steps, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, there is another event as part of this motion, do we wanna talk about it or no?
Yeah, can we, do we have a promoter?
Please go ahead.
And so the, wanna talk? Ray Couture, if we could, uh.
I have no one up to speak, so.
You don't, but we do have a, we do have the event.
Representative from there?
Yes, on the line, Ray Couture.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having me, this is Ray Couture, General Manager of American Social in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, which, uh, event are you referring to?
The Friendsgiving.
Mr. Vice Mayor, which, which event would you like to speak to?
No, I, I, this, I think Commissioner Sorenson had mentioned, this is, uh, in District Four. No, I already spoke about the, uh, the Thirteen Point One Run, I, this one is, uh, next, this is the annual event next to American Social Mayor, the one you said you're never invited to.
Are you gonna?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, Ray, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, um, so, obviously COVID-19, major concern of, of ours, of mine, um, talk to me, how many people are you expecting?
Uh, it really depends on, on the weather, we're maxing out the event, um, for a two-hour marker. Uh, about eighty people, we're planning on putting thirteen tables of six out there, so essentially thirteen picnic tables, socially distancing. Um, I attached a map to my application if you have it available. But there's a square footage of about thirty by seventy-five feet, uh, on the parallel street next to us, which gives us about twenty-five hundred square feet, uh, give or take, um, that's gonna fit thirteen tables, uh, socially distancing, um, times six is about almost eighty people. We're gonna put an event, RCP on Eventbrite, and with the conjunction of, uh, our in-house, uh, reservation software, open table, we're gonna limit, an eighty-person max per two-hour window for each day of the event.
So you have maximum attendance of six hundred, so how does eighty equals six hundred?
Uh, I have no idea, I'm a little confused, uh, the seating chart that was attached to the application says that we're gonna max out the capacity at eighty people per seating.
But I have to be honest with you, Ray, you have eighty people on any given, uh, weekend night, so, uh, you're a very popular place, you obviously do well, and you're a fun place to, to go out, but eighty people, I just can't imagine just eighty people are gonna show up. If you have a special event, I would expect hundreds of people are gonna show up. How are you planning to, I mean, let's be real, how are you planning to, um, socially distance, keep it safe? You know, I, eighty people is not gonna happen.
Well, it's eighty people per two-hour window of seating, so if the event goes for ten hours, that's five rotations in seating at eighty people each. We're working with our barricade company to quarter off the area along with a detour route, so that way there'll be one entrance off of La Solas on Southeast Eighth. At the entrance, there'll be, uh, a police detail and a security guard. Uh, exit, there'll also be a police detail and a security guard, as well as two ushers, um, working guest services, making sure that everyone is staying seated at their assigned tables. If they are up, they are required to wear face masks.
Are you gonna have, uh, DJ music on the outside or just the inside?
Well, we're gonna have sound outside, it's gonna be piped from inside, whether it's live or pre-recorded, it's gonna be, uh, mostly background music during the event, um, for a round at night.
So it sounds to me like you're gonna have a party that, that you can't contain the sound of music within the barricades, so if, if I, if Dean Trent House wants to come, and he's the eighty-first person, I'm just gonna stand on the outside of the barricade and have my own party with the other two hundred people who are also gonna be there. I mean, I'm just seeing this getting, it's, it's gonna be a popular event, and you're gonna be, you might be able to, to manage the people within the barricaded area, but what about all the other people you draw to the area that are, that are gonna be hanging out and partying on the outside of that barricade? Isn't there a sense of responsibility to the city for that situation?
Um, well, the barricade will be starting off Eighth and La Solas, um, on the other side of the crosswalk, because I can't, I can't block the crosswalk parallel to, uh, La Solas, um, there won't be any access on our side of the street, because the building will be there, it'll be barricaded in. The barricade goes to the very end where there's that rear alley space, which I cannot block. Um, I don't believe a crowd could develop, um, on the crosswalk, because the traffic will be live on La Solas, there won't be anywhere for them to, to go or crowd the street.
Okay, I have no further questions. Do you have any further questions?
Or anything further, Mayor?
You're good, okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I just have a question, when I'm looking at the event application, and maybe we just need to, instead of, like, striking it out, maybe kinda think it through a little bit more, instead of St. Patty's to Friendsgiving, or I don't even, can't even see what date it is. And I, when I keep looking, it says, expected sustained attendance, two hundred, but yet we're just kinda confirmed seventy-eight. Um, so I don't really wanna vote on this application that's attached, so maybe it's as amended or something, because I don't wanna vote on two hundred people coming into, was it twenty-five hundred square feet? Is that the space? And I'm kinda surprised, you can have eighty people, twenty-five hundred square feet, and my house is about the same size, and I can only have ten. But, uh, and I do have some outside space, too, so maybe that's where everyone's going.
Maybe we should party at your house.
Maybe, maybe I'm just gonna get a picnic table, since, uh.
Okay, all right, well, I get, again, uh, the representations tonight are inconsistent with the application. Like you say, the expected sustained attendance is two hundred. They're only accommodating for eighty with the amount of tables they have, so, um, I don't know, you know, I will, I will defer to the District Commissioner, what you wanna do, Commissioner Sorenson?
Ray, I'm assuming the two hundred is incorrect.
Well.
So is the six hundred that says maximum.
That's what the application says. Is Ray still on the line? Is he still on the line, Chris?
When is this, so, let, let me ask a question, when is this event scheduled to occur?
Before we meet again. I can't tell either, I don't know, it says eleven, two, three, nineteen, I'm not sure.
It doesn't really say.
It doesn't say, it can't, it's supposed to be the, what is it?
It occurred two weeks.
No, it says Friday, November twenty-seven.
Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Right, it's three days.
Three days.
But, yeah, where you?
Go to the last page of the application, page seven of eight.
That's the last page that it occurred.
All right, well, the application's a little.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little fecaca here, okay.
Fecaca?
Tell me the exhibit I'm approving.
So it's the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
And twenty-ninth.
And twenty-nine, three days.
Well, that's where you get to six hundred, then, okay.
That's where you get to six hundred, but the two, you're right, the two hundred sustained attendance is the representation he's giving us is, that's incorrect, two hundred.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I don't know, I got cut off there, uh, and I apologize about the application, this was an original, uh, event approved for St. Patrick's Day weekend, which got, um, canceled the Thursday before the shutdown. So originally, I was working with Barbara Smith, and we, she reached out to me on, uh, September seventeenth, asking if we wanted to, um, continue this as outside events were starting to be approved, so I said, yes, the first available date we will take, we can use the same application, um, schedule, three days, um, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Um, that was ultimately pushed back again, um, to this weekend, I just trying to get this in before the new year. So originally, I was with Barbara Smith, and then Caroline, uh, Bean took it over, um, and that's why it's a little confusing, so I apologize.
So, is, what's correct, eighty sustained attendance or two hundred sustained attendance?
Eighty. I have seating for eighty, that's what I'm gonna use.
And then what's the maximum expected attendance throughout the duration?
Uh, depends on the day, Friday, we're from eight to twelve, so that's about four hours. That's a two-hour window, so it's two seedings, a hundred and sixty people for that Friday.
No, actually, the application says six till twelve on Friday, twelve PM to twelve AM on Saturday, and twelve to ten PM on Sunday.
Oh, yes, you're right, I'm sorry, that was a question she had about any background music that was gonna be played outside. So six to twelve Friday, noon to midnight Saturday, and noon to ten PM on Sunday.
So what would you say would be the maximum attendance for those, um, twenty-eight hour, twenty-eight hours?
The maximum, so say we take Saturday, which is a twelve-hour event, it's two hour windows, so six times eighty is, let's see, quick math, more than eighty all day.
Seriously?
These are big crowds. Mayor, I, I wanna also just say one thing for the sake of consistency, Mayor, because I know you were concerned with the amplified music at ten, and we rolled it back to nine. Now, this event has requested a special exemption, so that they're saying that they want the amplified music to go until midnight on Friday and Saturday and ten PM on Sunday, so are we gonna be consistent for the neighborhoods and the folks that live around here as we are on the beach, or are we gonna say okay with music amplified till midnight, when we just said nine PM at the garage, and now we're saying in an application midnight for amplified music?
Well, as you know, this is a commercial, uh, entertainment district, so it's, it's not really just residential.
I think the Barre, I think the Barrier Island is, is very, that's very close to an entertainment district as well.
Are you recommending, then, that we re- we, we reduce the hour?
Well, I'll defer to the District Commissioner, but, I mean, we just said nine PM in an entertainment district down the beach, and we're saying now midnight for this event, for amplified music, that's actually an extension, that's, that's, uh, a special exemption to go that late. So I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention so that we're consistent in what we do.
All right, we'll leave it up to the District Commissioner.
Maybe if it was inside, it could go till midnight, but outside, I think, is pushing it, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, exactly.
That's a little late outside, my opinion.
Dad, what are your thoughts?
Chris, what's the normal allowance, the, the time allowance?
Ten, ten o'clock, and the reason this ended up as a motion as opposed to a consent motion is because it was outside of the range, which we would approve administratively.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm good to having it at ten PM.
Okay, so, um, all right, would someone like to make a motion with regard to, to M1?
But hold on, just to be clear, Chris, this would be the, we're saying the music needs to, the outdoor playing of music needs to end at ten PM, right? That, that's where they're seeking the exemption?
That is correct, the indoor can be at any, up till the time of closing, but outdoors.
Anything outside of the window of Friday and Saturday, uh, music cannot be allowed after ten, and Sunday through Thursday at nine, if it deviates from those windows, that's why it ends up here for a special exemption.
Yep, say that one more time, so I'm just understanding.
Friday and Saturday till ten, Sunday through Thursday till nine.
Okay. Outdoor, yeah, so I think.
Okay, so, would you, someone needs to move the item, we need to get moving on this, so, uh, so what would be the motion that you would like to make?
Yeah, so I'm moving forward with approval for Friends Thanksgiving, um, with the, uh, understanding of the stated uh, eighty, uh, sustained capacity, eighty-person sustained capacity with music ending, outdoor amplification ending at ten PM, um, and the event can continue until midnight.
Nine PM on Sunday.
True.
Right, and what about the other two items, the Cleveland Clinic Thirteen Point One?
I think that's the only other one.
And the Veterans Day 5K. Is that for next year?
That's not part of this, was it?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
That would be for next year, would it not? You want, Chris, can you give us some clarity on that?
Yeah, I'm just pulling up the, uh, application now, so, uh, let me go to the dates and times, um, I may have to go back to Parks and Rec to get a better answer. Those, the, uh, yeah, these applications are.
Yeah, I, I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing from my staff that I believe that's the same event, that's what I'm getting from my staff, but.
That's the same event?
Yes.
Okay. So there's just two events here.
Yep. So move for the approval of the 13.1, the 5K, as well as the Friends Thanksgiving with the, uh, time reductions and the clarity around, uh, sustained capacity.
So nine, 10, 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday and 9:00 PM on Sunday. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move the seconded. Please call the roll. Do you have anything? Did you want to add?
Mayor, I had a, I had a question for Chris. If he could just clarify something. Chris, does the county actually approve events or deny events like we do, or do they just approve and deny safety plans?
I, one in, it would be one in the same, I think, because if you have an approved safety plan, versus a denied safety plan, that would be an approval or a denial based upon what they have latitude over.
Uh, but I think what the vice mayor is saying is they don't comment on noise ordinances and they don't come, this is just on safety.
Strictly COVID, yeah.
But they can cancel the event.
If they feel that it.
Right.
Okay. So they actually do have the ability to actually cancel the event. So they do more than just approve or deny a safety plan of the event.
Well, if they deny a safety plan, they deny the event.
Well, they could say come back with a new safety plan or here's a way to fix the safety plan, but.
Which they can. So if there, if there's an event, for example, with 500 people and they feel they can't accommodate that with their safety plan, the, the, there's nothing that would stop the promoter from saying, okay, let's tone down our event, make it a hundred person event and then resubmit that for approval. So there's, there's flexibility there, but it would be COVID related on the county's part. So.
Right. Understood. Thank you.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner McKenzie? Hey, no smooching there, Commissioner.
Yes.
Was that a yes, Commissioner McKenzie? He was on there for a second. Commissioner McKenzie, are you there? You have to unmute yourself.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mayor Trent House. Yes, and the motion's approved as amended. Resolution R1.
Hold on, Mayor, as we, at some point, we don't have to do it now, but I want to talk about, go back to the Brazilian festival because we haven't finished talking about that.
We approved?
No.
Oh, oh, we'll talk, it's not, it's not an agenda item?
Correct.
So we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Obrigado.
You're so introduced. R1 appointment of board and committee members.
Names that were, excuse me, provided for the December 2nd meeting consensus downtown development authority Greg Bruton nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Education Advisory Board Heather Brinkworth nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Economic Development Advisory Board Brett Rose, and that's a reinstatement nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Public Art Placement Advisory Board Phoenix Marks. And that's category professional artist nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And Bonnie Clearwater, professional artist nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. And then for tonight's resolution, Aviation Advisory Board Wes Smnonic, Smnonic nominated by Mayor Trent House, Budget Advisory Board Abby Demi Aladipo nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Citizen Committee of Recognition Anna Lee. And she is a past honoree nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Citizen Police Review Board Paul Eichner nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Down Down Development Authority Charlie Ladd nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Parks, Recs and Beaches Board Caleb Gunter nominated by Mayor Trent House. Police and Firefighters Retirement System Board of Trustees Jim Noggle nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Dennis Hall nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And finally Sustainability Advisor Board Elizabeth Adler nominated by Mayor Trent House.
Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Please call the roll. Any questions? Does anybody have any additions or modifications? Objections? Okay.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too and made a part here of Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes, and those appointments are approved. Thank you all for wanting to participate and make the commitment to our community. And now we're on to PH1. This is a public hearing amending the housing and community development amended 2019, 2020 annual action plan and the 2015 to 2019 amended consolidated plan in response to the coronavirus aid relief and economic security act waivers. Anyone have any questions? No one signed up to speak? Someone like to, uh, is this a resolution? What is this? It's a motion. Someone like to move the item?
So move, may I have a question for, uh, Chris?
Sure, go ahead.
And I will move it, but Chris, um, I know I've mentioned earlier, I just want to make sure that we will eventually get some sort of report out on how, um, these two and a half million dollars has been spent, just so we can know who's been helped, who's been assisted. Uh, it looks like the government's telling us that we're in line for $2,575,348. Will be able to get a, a report on that?
Yes, sir. We certainly will.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes, and the, uh, motions approved, PH2 is a public hearing and adoption of resolution approving the Parks, Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board's recommendation for approval of land purchase of real property located at Southwest 5th Court and Southwest 12th Avenue as provided in the Parks and Recreation Bond Resolutions. I have a couple of people who have signed up to speak. Um, probably just, well, I'll ask them if they, is Hope Calhoun on the, on the line?
She represents the property owner, Mayor.
Okay. And Ken Krasnow is probably here just for questions to be answered. So, um.
Mr. Mayor, Hope is on the line if you want to, uh, if you want us to recognize her.
Okay, Hope Calhoun. Do you have any comments you'd like to share with me?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions that anyone may have for me.
Okay. Very good. Um, does anyone have any questions of Ms. Calhoun?
Actually, I do have some questions. I don't know necessarily for Hope, but maybe for, um, Chris and also Ken. And that's maybe hope to whoever they feel is more comfortable answering them.
Well, why don't you ask the question and then we'll see who's best answer, Ken best answer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, beautiful parcel. Uh, that would be a great addition for the city to have, but I do have some questions after reading through um, the information. So this parcel looks like it's pretty equal in size to the parcel that we did approve in Selva Bend, not too far away on the water. Um, about two acres for each parcel. We paid about two and a half million for the, uh, parcel in Selva Bend. Um, this one's coming in at over four million as opposed to the 2.5 million. So that's one question. Why the differential for the waterfront and the same basic acreage? Um, also I'm, I'm just concerned and I want to hear from Alan or Ken or Hope. Um, there are some prescriptive easements here. There, there's some title issues with this land and there are some conditions. Um, so I just want to make sure that everything's going to be clear on this and that we feel comfortable, um, that all of the parties are comfortable moving forward with this, with some of the issues that are identified um, in the backup with regards to the title, um, and the easements and, um, pretty much those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Ken, would you like to?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Vice Mayor Glassman, uh, the, the difference in, in, uh, in price is, is primarily reflected in a larger waterfront, uh, parcel. So the area uh, is similar, but this, this parcel has significantly more waterfront. And if it were to be developed, uh, obviously, you know, you'd get, uh, higher value for waterfront, uh, development than uh, call it, you know, inland development. So, um, the, the per square foot waterfront prices are comparable to the uh, waverly purchase. It's just that this, this property has uh, significantly more waterfront, uh, acreage. Um, and with regards to the prescriptive easement, yes, uh, we are working uh, and we'll have all of those, uh, issues cleared prior to closing. We, uh, extended our due diligence period, uh, to allow for us to work through, uh, that issue. And, uh, right now what we would effectively do is, is carve off, uh, you know, that, that, we call it that, uh, area that's in, it's in, in dispute, uh, which, which wouldn't affect, uh, the overall, uh, use of the, of the property.
How about?
But we're giving, we're giving the seller, it looks like we're giving the seller a year after the closing to successfully provide the clean title. Is that, is that normal? Is that standard? I mean, there's nothing we're going to be able, we have to wait a whole year after to have clear title?
We, no, no, we're going to have clear title on the parcel. It's just this, it's, it's effectively a, uh, like a 10 by 100, you know, foot easement. Um, so that piece that, that, you know, call it roughly 1,200 square foot, uh, easement, uh, would be, uh, carved off of the purchase and then they would have a year to clear that up. So we would have clean title on uh, the remainder of the, of the parcel and then, uh, the, the easement would be cleared up over the course of the year. If it's not, then it just remains, uh, you know, not part of the city's property.
So what, but Ken, where is this easement? Is it through the center of the property?
No, no, no. It's on the, it's on the, it's on the, uh, on the edge of the property, has no, no effect on the, on the use of the property. Um, and it's, uh, it's, it's adjacent to, uh, the neighbor. So it's, it's a, a piece that's easily, uh, if, if it were never to be cleared up, uh, easily to be, uh, you know, carved off and would have no effect on the property.
Is that 100 feet on the water or is it 10?
No, nothing on the water.
Nothing's on the water?
Right.
Should there be an adjustment of price?
There is.
If we don't get, if we don't get that piece?
There is. We, we adjusted the price per, per, uh, per square foot and that's going to be, uh, reflected in the, in the purchase.
But your mayor, just one, one caveat, uh, there's another section now that's come up recently, which is why we need the extra due diligence. So an amount of money hasn't been agreed on that yet. So there's still some issues that need to be. So it's all contingent, your approval is all contingent on that occurring. If that doesn't occur, deal's off.
I think this needs to be deferred until these title issues are resolved. I mean, why are we spending $4 million and we don't even know if this is a deal?
So we've got, so we've got two agenda items that are one right after the other. So we're, we're here with public hearing two. These are issues I would have brought up during public hearing three, but I'll bring them up now. Um, that, uh, if we choose to move forward with this, uh, property acquisition, um, I would plan on asking the commission to make it contingent upon extending the due diligence period by 21 days and us being able to clear up these outstanding issues with the prescriptive easements. And so it was, uh, thought to be important that it stayed on the agenda contingent upon those two items. If we can't get uh, those two prescriptive easements, uh, handled within the 21 day additional due diligence period, uh, then we would not close on the property. But that really is a discussion for PH3 because that's the acquisition of the property. PH2 is simply to approve the Parks and Rec and Beaches Advisory Board position on whether or not we can use bond funds for the property.
Right. I understand that, but they go hand in hand.
They do. Yeah. You can't have one without the other.
Commissioner Sorenson, what are your thoughts on this?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah. So I've been working on this for many years. Um, so we have been long engaged and long aware of the title challenges and we're in a place where we can move forward and if they're not resolved, then, uh, we are not bound. So, um, I'm feeling very positive about this. We've had good relationships with the, the, the seller and engagement with, uh, the surrounding property owners. So I think we're going to get there and, um, uh, so I'd, I'd like us to move forward.
Well, again, okay, anyone, have anyone else have any comments?
I think Hope has her hand raised. Ms. Calhoun, do you want to weigh in?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say basically everything that you and Commissioner Sorenson said, that is, uh, we would really, um, we're really interested in moving forward at this time. We believe that the issues will be worked out, uh, enough time so that the closing can happen. Again, you know, this only affects a small portion of easement, the prescriptive easement. Um, just impact a small portion of one of the lots, again, not on the water. So, um, we don't believe that it should be something that hinders looking forward tonight.
Um, how long is, the, uh, the commissioner said that he's been working on this for years. But why is it taking years to deal with these easement issues? It shouldn't be.
Mayor, this, so as with any property acquisition in my limited experience, there's always multiple issues. So we've had, um, you know, a long involved process of discussing pricing. Um, we've had a lot of due diligence around title research. Um, and as we've kind of come and working on this, it's been taking time, but, but we're, you know, making progress and so forth. And so uh, we don't, again, I don't, we're not binding ourselves, um, to this without, uh, the caveat and the, the out for this.
Can I ask to whom is the prescriptive easement?
In your. There's a joining property owner. This property apparently has been vacant for quite some time. I believe it was acquired in 2015 from the previous, from the current seller. And that property, according to that property owner, it's a private residence, um, has used as a fence which encroaches upon that parcel and has been presumably using this openly as his own for decades. So he's, he's, he's claiming a prescriptive.
It's adverse possession.
He's actually doing a prescriptive easement. He's, he's asserting a prescriptive easement. So our, our point was, well, we're not going to pay for property that we're not going to have. So there was a discount negotiated to take that out. And then there's some provision with regards to trying to clear title to it within, I guess, the year. Uh, but now there's another section, a perpendicular section that, uh, our city survey ran out and noticed that the fence was encroaching on that side as well. So now we need that extra time to be able to make a similar accommodation with regards to that particular prescriptive easement. And that came up very recently. So we needed extra due diligence time, which we asked for 30, but we got 21 days. And if we can't get it done within 21 days, then we can't get it done.
Well, I just find it a little difficult to understand how a project that we've been working on for years and we expect to resolve all issues within three weeks. But if you feel that we can, well, it sounds to me like we're not going to be able to. So we're just going to, so this, if we approve this tonight, it sounds to me like we should approve it with the understanding that we're not going to get these sections and that we're just approving it knowing that we're not getting these sections and be comfortable with that. I don't think you can resolve something in three weeks, especially someone who's claiming an easement due to prescription or adverse possession or whatever it may be. So, um, so if I vote for this, then it's going to be with the understanding that we're not getting those and we'll just see where, where the chips fall. Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor, I just have one more question. So let's just take that a little further. So if we don't get this, like you think we're not going to get this, will this impact the overall makeup of the park or the shape of the, will it, will it have any adverse impact on what it is that we want to do there as a park or how will this impact the overall space?
Hold it back.
No.
There really wouldn't be an impact. It's more of the, we wanted to make sure that we weren't paying for something that we're not getting. So.
You could have drawn in here where those easements are.
Yeah. Why don't you, if you look at here, this, this might help, help you all. If you look at, look at PH3, PH3, and then look at exhibit two, exhibit two and PH3, it's a an appraisal and, um, it'll just give you a good visual, I think, which might help. So, and then go to page 27. go to page 27, page 27 and see if you, if it pulls up the, the overhead visual with a blue outline around the property.
Yes.
Okay. So if you see, see the southeast corner of the, of the blue line, there's a narrow kind of long rectangular, that's basically the easement. So if we don't get that, we don't get that just narrow strip of land.
Okay. So that perpendicular line that goes across, that one now is also in dispute.
Wait, oh, perpendicular to that little, along, along Southwest Fifth Street you're talking about?
Yeah. You see the loss, uh, you see the, the lot there where the cars are?
Yep.
Yeah. That there's, if your line that goes across there, that's in dispute as well.
So it's all surrounding that particular parcel?
Right.
Well, that's much larger than just that little sliver.
No, well, it's.
Well, that's just, it's not the whole lot.
Just goes.
Okay.
It's just whatever surrounds that.
Hopefully you can follow my arrow as I am.
Yes.
It's this area down here and now this, we have to figure this one out. This one's new, but, uh.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Let's move forward on this.
I just wanted to ask, uh, Ken, if he feels comfortable. It looks like this was last, uh, purchased in five years ago for $2,360. So is that a, does that seem to make sense to go from two, three, six, zero to four million in the five years? That's standard for this site, Ken?
Ken, are you on the line still?
I'm looking.
Oh, I was, I think I was muted for a second there. Am I back?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, a- absolutely. That, that, that is a market for, for waterfront in this area, which is, as you know, is becoming in, uh, in, in short supply.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? They're being known. Would someone like to move the item?
Move it.
Is, remember this is PH two. We're just voting on whether or not to, uh, accept the, uh, the advisory board's recommendation. It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move the seconded. Please call the roll.
A resolution in the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the recommendation of the Parks Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board for the property acquisition located at Southwest Fifth Court and Southwest 12th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33312, as provided for in bond resolution number 20 dash 08 and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes. And PH two is approved. PH three, this is on the actual commitment of the funds, motion proving purchase and sale agreement as amended for real property located at Southwest, uh, Fifth Court and Southwest 12th Avenue under the parks bond for an amount not to exceed $4,050,000. Someone like to move the item?
And I'll move it.
It would be as amended because the language has 30 days for the due diligence. It's actually 21 days. So.
Move as amended.
As amended. It's been seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes. Come on, folks. District four is eating up all the money already.
They only have seven.
Seven and a half. He's almost there.
I'm keeping track. Don't worry.
No one.
Okay, just saying, just saying. Okay. PH four, public hearing, a resolution granting a waiver of limitations at 1776, very patriotic, Southeast 10th Street, the installation of an eight post boat lift. We have one person here signed up. That's Tyler Chappelle, probably just on behalf of the applicant. If you have any questions, if there are no questions, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
May I have, I have one question, Mayor.
Wait, it's been introduced by Commissioner, uh, Sorenson. Now Vice Mayor has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. Is, uh, is Andrew here with us from Marina Advisory Board?
Yes, I am.
Thanks. Andrew, what was the objection, the one objection on this item at the Marina Advisory Board meeting?
The objection was the, uh, extraordinary circumstance, uh, was, uh, to safely board the vessel and one board member didn't feel that that was an extraordinary circumstance.
I could barely.
Yeah. He's a little muted, but I think you said that one board member felt it was not an extenuating or extraordinary circumstance. So she dissented?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious because it wasn't explained in the minutes. I was just wondering what the reason was. So thank you for that.
Well, if that were the standard by which these, uh, applications would be reviewed, um, I don't know whether that has ever really been, uh, an impediment to reviewing these over the years that I've been here. But in any case, um, so the introduce, the resolution's been introduced. Any further questions? Please call the roll.
A resolution in the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to section 47 dash 19.3E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale granting a waiver of limitations of section 47 dash 19.3 to permit Nevada Properties LLC Delaware Limited liability to install one 50,000 pound eight post boat lift that will extend a maximum of plus minus 31.2 feet from the property line into the adjacent waters of the Stranahan River. Such property being located at 1776 Southeast 10th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33316, more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, providing for severability, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes. And the resolution is approved. PH five. This is a public hearing, uh, regarding an ordinance amending the Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan by adding, deleting and modifying goals, objectives and policies, amending the future land use element, housing element, the general sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water and, and natural groundwater recharge element as incorporated in the infrastructure element, coastal management, community health and safety element, conservation element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvements element, transportation and mobility element, parks and recreation element, historic preservation element, and the public schools facility element. I think there are more elements in this motion than on the periodic cha- uh, uh, table, uh, providing for the addition of urban design element, climate change element and economic development element and to advance Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan update case number L19001. Anyone have any questions with regard to this ordinance? Someone like to introduce it?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Introduce it first?
Yes, certainly. Introduce.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Chris, um, I don't think it's standard, but if you could just help explain why it did take the nine months from our first reading to our second reading on this. Was there something extraordinary or that we were waiting for, but, um, nine months between readings? So help me understand why.
So I see Dwayne may want to weigh in. He just came live. Um, and let me go to Anthony from, uh, uh, Sustainable Development and, uh, and see if they can offer an explanation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Anthony Fajardo, Sustainable Development Director, City of Fort Lauderdale. Uh, one of the reasons that it took as long as it did was honestly because of COVID. Other agencies were slowing down as well. We also incorporated a lot of language that needed to be reviewed. Um, and you would see that in your backup. So it typically wouldn't take this long, but one of the benefits of, of what did occur is that we did add some language to, uh, address, uh, health crises and that was in your backup. So that's fundamentally what, what really happened.
No, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I, I think the work product's excellent. It was, I thought so back in February when we first were presented with it. A lot, a lot of work goes into the comp plan. So, you know, thank you. So I understand that now. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan by adding, deleting and modifying goals, objectives and policies, amending the future land use element, housing element, the general sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water and natural groundwater recharge element as incorporated in the infrastructure element, coastal management element, conservation element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvements element, transportation and mobility element, parks and recreation element, historic preservation element and public school facilities element, providing for the addition of urban design element, climate change element and economic development element and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions transmitted to the applic- applicable reviewing agencies and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes. And PH five is approved. PH six, it's a public hearing, a quasi, excuse me, quasi judicial ordinance approving a public purpose use for a temporary fire station, a surface parking lot in the Central Beach Regional Activity Center, 735 North Fort Lauderdale Beach Boulevard. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
No.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Um, none, none new from the last time we heard this.
Same disclosures.
Same disclosures and.
Yes.
Same.
Is this the first time we're hearing this?
This is the final action in this case. This is the temporary fire station. So we can rebuild station 13. So really your only disclosure would probably be if you talked to me about it.
Right. So that's not a real disclosure.
Correct.
Okay. Um, uh, okay. Any questions regarding the ordinance? Someone like to introduce it?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving as a public purpose use pursuant to section 47 dash 18.26 of the city of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, a surface parking lot and temporary fire station generally located at 735 North Fort Lauderdale Beach Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and legally described as block 10 Birch Ocean Front subdivision number two, Fort Lauderdale, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book 21, page 22 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, together with the east half of that portion of vacated Breakers Avenue, lying adjacent to block 10 Birch Ocean Front subdivision number two as vacated per official records booked 16039, page 239 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida. Said land situated in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, and containing 70,572 square feet, 1.620 acres, more or less granting relief from specific zoning regulations and approving an associated site plan. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Yes. And the, uh, item is approved. Now we're into, uh, uh, second readings of ordinances. This is OSR one, so an ordinance amending chapter 16 entitled miscellaneous provisions and offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by creating article nine entitled polystyrene products and providing for penalties. I have two people who've signed up. One is in person and one is not. So is Emma Kavanaugh on the, on the line?
She is recognized. Just needs to unmute.
Emma, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
You can hear me? Yeah.
I turn up your volume.
Can you hear me better now?
Not really. I hear a whimper, but not his voice.
I can, we can hear at least from here, Mayor.
You, you can hear?
Yeah, for what it's worth. Yeah.
Okay. Emma, why don't you go ahead?
Hi, everyone. My name is Emma and I am a St. Thomas Aquinas High School senior and the president of a surf better foundation club at my school. And I'm in support of this ordinance because plastic pollution is a large and threatening issue, especially to our home in South Florida. Plastics make up 90% of the trash in the ocean and it only 9% of the plastic ever produced in the world has been recycled. Polystyrene is also typically not recycled because it breaks into smaller pieces through photo degradation and it's not clean enough, um, to be recycled. These products are detrimental to our environment and there are other alternatives such as paper or aluminum, um, that can be used instead. And on this meeting, there are several other students from my school who are in support of this ordinance and we care because plastic pollution is an issue greatly affecting our local economy, beaches and coasts. Without a healthy environment, ecotourism cannot thrive in Florida. Additionally, other areas, including Largo and Orange County, Florida, have passed similar ordinances that have proved to be successful and effective. The Largo ordinance bans styrofoam and the Orange County ordinance banned foam and other plastics and they're both on city property. Hollywood also has a ban on non-biodegradable items east of the intercoastal. And I believe that a styrofoam ban in Fort Lauderdale will be very effective and beneficial. It's a step in the right direction as other areas are already passing similar legislation and plastic pollution is not going away without introducing policy.
All right. Well, great. Um, Emma, first of all, thank you for appearing tonight and for speaking on behalf of this measure. I also want to thank you and, uh, your colleagues at, at school for advancing this subject. It's really, really important for our community. And, uh, thank you for taking a strong interest in, uh, trying to keep our environment safe and clean for everybody. Um, we have a second person. Uh, is Skylar Hall in the house? Yeah, there you are, Skylar.
There he is.
So you want to come up to the, uh, podium? You have three minutes. Think you can get it all in?
Oh, yeah. She's already said most of the facts, but I feel like I can add a little bit more to it. Um, good afternoon. My name is Skylar Hall. We're good? All right. Sweet. Good afternoon. My name is Skylar Hall. Here to support the ban on polyester and prohibiting the synthetic aromatic hydrocarbon polymer on government properties and facilities will serve as a gateway plastic to other bans, leading to a more sustainable and enjoyable working environment, working force at these establishments. Nature is a scientific remedy to stress, anger, frustration, along with other negative emotions. And by replacing unnatural substances and appliances with sustainable and more eco-friendly ones will not only create a more better environment for staff and hardworking individuals here and not here today. Another reason why banning polyester is justified is that it is purely toxic to the environment we live, see and breathe on. Banning this product will increase the overall health of Fort Lauderdale while decreasing the amount of unrecyclable litter our community is producing. This ban is small compared to the overall problem of plastic waste, but like pushing over a line of dominoes, will have a butterfly effect that will lead to a more cleaner, efficient and sustainable community such as Hollywood and other communities.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. And again, I, my comments, I want to share the same with you as I did with, uh, the others, that, uh, we appreciate your advancing this item before the commission and, uh, and, uh, anticipate the commission approving this and, uh, we'll have a little cleaner environment going forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight. Will someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Please, anyone have any questions? Please call the roll.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending chapter 16 entitled miscellaneous provisions and offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by creating article nine entitled polystyrene products, providing for penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and providing. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yeah.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes. And the item is approved on second reading. Skylar, thank you for, uh, sitting through the whole meeting for the, for the, did you enjoy it? Okay. You had a moment and education and civic involvement. So, thank you. Great. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, okay. The last item on the printed agenda, uh, is OSR two, uh, second reading quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from residential multifamily high-rise, high-density RMH 60, uh, district to the community business CB district through the allocation of commercial flexibility and associated site plan approval for 28,795 square foot supermarkets. Presti Corporation, Royal Quality Homes LLC and Ocean Reef Investments. Presti Corporation, Royal Quality Homes LLC and Ocean Reef Investments LLC. Whoops. Time's up. So anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any additional?
No.
None? Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything additional?
Nothing additional, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner McKenzie? Hello?
Yes.
There he is.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Sorenson?
Nothing additional.
Nothing additional, I have nothing additional either. So would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Have a bunch of people sign up to speak for questions only, so.
Introduce.
Introduced, any questions? There being none, please call the role.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations. Through the revision of the official zoning map of the city of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof so as to rezone from RMH sixty residential multifamily high-rise, high-density district to CB Community Business District through the allocation of commercial flexibility, all of Lot ninety, Block one, Lauderdale Beach, according to the platethrough recorded in Plat Book four, page two of the public records of Broward County, Florida, together with all Lot two, Block twenty-three, Fort Lauderdale Beach Extension, according to the platethrough recorded in Plat Book twenty-nine, page twenty-two of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of North Ocean Boulevard, north of northeast twenty-seventh Street, east of northeast thirty-third Avenue and south of northeast thirtieth Street, all set lands being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved, good luck. Publix, thank you again for investing in our community and I'm sure the people on the beach will appreciate the Publix there. And I hear it's within walking distance of the, of many condos that are on the beach.
Sapphire.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, the Sapphire.
Yes, I already have my cart, my cart is ready, Mayor, my cart is ready.
Okay.
You gotta get a tag for that cart.
Yeah. So we have a couple of additional items tonight. Commissioner Sorenson, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, just want to revisit the Brazilian Fest and Chris, do we have the promoter on now?
We do, he was on video earlier, let's see if he triggers back up here because.
Yep. And who is that?
He was on mute, now he's off mute. Go, Mr. Semelli, have I got that correct?
Oh, Luciano Semelli, yes.
That's me, that's me.
Luciano, how are you?
How are you? Congratulations on your victory, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
So Commissioner Sorenson, you have questions?
Yeah, Luciano, thank you very much. So obviously we have, I have a lot of concerns about COVID and spread and taking care of this, this big challenge and trying to have events. So walk, walk us through how you're going to address our concerns about COVID, social distancing, masks, attendance, so forth, please, thank you.
Thank you so much for giving me a chance to speak with you, Commissioner. Congratulations on what you're doing for allowing small businesses to remain opening and for finding a balance between safety and remaining in business. That's the most important thing. I have to applaud you for everything that everybody is doing, the boat show, there's a balance between, you see, we can still show that we can succeed and give hope to everybody else. Thank you so much. We are limiting the number of people, sir. We are limiting the number of people. Tickets are purchased online.
So what, what are you limiting the number of people to?
We are at the plaza, the plaza is a huge space. We eliminated, we will have just beach chairs and tables. That's all we're gonna have. We are asking people to bring beach chairs, it's outdoor and we're gonna have tables. We're gonna have two hundred and forty beach chairs only in front of the stage and about eighty tables behind that. Tickets, we are limiting the number of people to fifteen hundred all day at the plaza. So the plaza is really a huge space. We will ask people to, to stay home if they want, but we want to give twenty percent of our clients, donors, fans, minorities, vendors, suppliers, an opportunity to have hope.
So Mr. Semelli, I think the big question is, when people enter the space, we understand that there's going to be a perimeter fence or a barrier around the park during the event. And, and it's our understanding that you will require people to wear masks as they enter the, enter the festival, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and will, will there be temperature checks taken at the entranceway?
Yes, sir, temperature check at the first barricade and the second barricade, also temperature check and masks, they have to have masks.
And who are you going to have going around the festival, ensuring that people keep their masks on? I know there'll be a lot of eating and drinking, which is the great fun part about these types of festivals, but, but people that are strolling around, going to various exhibits and booths and talking, who's going to be out there ensuring compliance with the face mask ordinance?
Your honor, we're gonna have about a lot of volunteers, thanks God, the Brazilian community has about three hundred churches in South Florida. So we are counting on our partners, church volunteers, to make sure that people keep distance. We are also requiring all the main acts, local acts in need of help, support and a chance to work unemployed since March to go on stage and say to everybody, let's keep distance, let's respect everybody's distance. We're gonna give an example, sir, of how events should be done from now on, I promise you that.
And what happens if someone is in the event and is not wearing a mask?
Sir, basically speaking, tickets are sold only online, we are limiting the number of tickets. So if somebody wants to buy the ticket, they have to first agree with terms and regulations and that is part of the, that is part of the exhibit that we have on the license agreement. So basically saying, they have to agree first when they purchase the ticket to all the rules and regulations and that means having the mask. All the employees must have the mask, all the vendors sign an agreement saying that all their employees have to have the mask, 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 I promise you that.
Well, if, but if someone declines to wear, will they be expelled from the, from the festival?
Yes, on top of accepting all the terms, when they purchase the ticket, we also have about twelve security officers walking around making sure that people is wearing a mask. We'll have, we'll have our volunteers to also say to everybody to wear a mask. If somebody declines to cooperate with what we are trying to do, they're gonna be escorted out, they're gonna be eighty-six, not by the police, but by the, by the security and they're gonna be given to, because we with security, private security companies cannot arrest anyone, they can take them to, to police officers and they can tell police officers what's going on. But we will enforce, we will enforce, we have to enforce.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners, Commissioner Sorenson?
Chris, do we have any way to postevaluate these events? Did, did this work? Did they comply? Were people wearing masks other than just kind of anecdotally through the grapevine?
You know, to this point, it's been anecdotal because we've never really had to do, you know, after actions on special events. If you want to pick a couple of the larger ones and do an after-action discussion on it, it sounds as though this promoter would be more than willing to be our first test case to, to take a, take a, you know, review after the fact and see what went right, what went wrong. I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, I think that might be helpful, you know, after this event to see and if this doesn't go well, then I'm just not going to be inclined to support further events like this. So, you know, so Luciano, kind of you have a lot riding on you, if you don't do this well, from my perspective, that's going to really have a chilling effect on future events like this for a while.
Commissioner Ben Sorenson, I've, I'm looking at you and paying attention in you throughout this whole commission meeting and I appreciate for the way you, you think about your, your community, your citizens and sir, I'm gonna make you proud and you can call Miss La Ma Fisher, that knows me for nine years and everything I promised to him, I've done it, I've done it. And all I want to do, sir, is give my community the opportunity to have some type of hope, believe in better days. It's not about the money, it's not about the amount of people that we want to bring, but it's about setting examples for the industry to remain open and for our community to continue to have some type of hope. We're gonna have signage there with disclaimers, we're gonna have sanitation stations, we're gonna have exhibitors separated not by six feet, ten feet, mandatory use of masks and the lineups all with us to kind of make sure that people is on their beach chairs and on tables when, of course, they need to eat, they might have to take the mask off, but they're gonna be sitting, they're gonna be, they're not gonna be walking. We've been talking with Marty from Broward County, sir, I promise you, for many times, many times, to do everything he has us to do. And we will make you proud and we will make the mayor proud because it's my community, my Brazilian community and I want my Brazilian community to look amazing to all of you, I promise you.
Excellent, all right, sounds good. He's, the mayor's Greek, so if you don't, if he gets upset, he gets upset.
We don't want that.
Plates.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Luciano, typically in Pompano Beach, how many people would you attract to the festival?
Sir, we, we started in two thousand twelve, the last count that I have in two thousand sixteen, we had a lot of people, we had a lot of people, we had thousands of people. But I was the one that asked the city, it's time to fence it off because safety is my top priority and divide between two days and ask for a symbolic ticket admission. So the numbers that we out there are maybe from two thousand sixteen, when it used to be a free admission event, but I cut that out after we got to a position where families could not enjoy, we have families, we have kids.
So roughly, how many people would attend last year?
Last year, last year, I would say that about altogether about eight thousand people between two days. In two thousand sixteen, we had twenty thousand people because it was free admission, then I cut that out.
Yes.
And then two thousand seventeen, we had people, but not as much, then two thousand eighteen, people, but not as much because I divided the number of people between two days and I adopted a ticket admission and I fenced the park, not because we wanted to profit, but because we want you, sir, Ben and the mayor to be able to come, meet your family and enjoy safety, be comfortable. It's not about, about the community.
So was Pompano basically concerned about the numbers and the size of the venue and that's why they said no?
I've got to be honest with you, I've been with the city of Pompano for nine years, it would be the ninth year now, and I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm extremely disappointed that I was not given a chance that the mayor of Fort Lauderdale has given to me after nine years because I didn't have a chance to deal with you like I am today and explain. Because it is, it is not about, this year is not about the amount of people, but it's about our capacity to give hope and to overcome challenges as one to adapt because fifty percent of our population is in favor of, of opening businesses, fifty percent of our population is concerned, I want to make just twenty percent, twenty percent of our fans happy. And we're gonna adopt, sir, every precaution, I'll put all my money on the line, everything to make sure, sir, that you're gonna be proud there on December twelve, thirteen.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Ben, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to bring some hope to my community, to my community.
I just want to make sure I'll have an opportunity to test my samba steps that day. Okay. So, all right, any other questions? There's no item on the floor, it's just you had questions. Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Semelli, for standing by and being part of that. I know that we're all concerned, we're concerned about keeping the life in our community going. And that is not just protect, it's not just about the party, but it's also keeping people away from the risk of the spread of COVID nineteen. We feel in Fort Lauderdale that we, we do our best to try to accommodate both. So everything that you can do, Mr. Semelli, to make sure that that happens, that we accomplish both things, we appreciate it and, and God willing, with the vaccine and the, and the, and the eradication of this virus someday, we can expect to see the Brazilian Festival here every year thereafter, so.
So thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to, to, to make twenty percent of our population happy, just twenty percent, thank you so.
We'll try to make a hundred percent next time.
Thank you so much.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, moving on, we have a walk-on, this is the ordinance. Now, by ordinance, we can change the charter?
We, we can, what we're doing here, it's a little confusing, but the, the ordinance that changed the charter on the election dates and so on and so forth, there were two of them actually, this one is one of them, this C eighteen forty-six, that's why, to your earlier comment about the mayor commissioner, that was actually fixed by the other ordinance. So in the charter, that's actually fixed. So this just dealt with the particular dates, so we're amending the ordinance, we're allowed to do that because Florida statutes allows us to modify those dates irrespective of special laws or charters or so on and so forth. So because it's a change of date, we can do that. So all we're doing is amending the resolution, I'm sorry, amending the ordinance that had in fact amended section three point oh two and section three point oh nine of the charter. And all we've done is we've changed it and there's a reason why we worded it this way, it's the first regular meeting day in December. Typically, it's the first Tuesday, but unfortunately, this year, the meeting is on a Wednesday, so we couldn't say Tuesday.
Okay.
So, and because the ordinances are typically voted upon during the regular meeting, which happens at six o'clock, we had to go ahead and use regular meeting day. So those are the changes in three oh two and in section three oh nine, those are the, so that'll permit and that'll occur every election.
Every election cycle, okay. Anyone have any questions with regard to this?
We are going to advertise this between readings, typically we have to advertise this.
Right, for the final, this will be the first.
Before final passage, we'll advertise.
Right, so this will be the first reading. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Okay. Any questions? There being none, please call the role.
In ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending ordinance number C dash one eight dash four six, city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida to provide that the mayor and city commissioners elected in regular municipal elections shall take office on the first regular meeting day in December following their election. municipal elections shall take office on the first regular meeting day in December following their election and providing for severability and an effective date. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner McKenzie?
He's at the Brazilian festival.
He's setting it up?
He's getting ready.
Okay.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes. And the ordinance is approved on first reading. I have an issue I just want to bring up that I forgot to bring up before. We were talking about the dates for the second meeting in January. This was the meeting right after the Martin Luther King holiday. I forgot to mention that I'm going to make an attempt to attend the inauguration in Washington, which is on the Wednesday. I'd like to know if we could have our meeting on Thursday in order to allow for me and anybody else that may want to go to the inauguration. Anyone have any objection or thoughts on that?
Sorry, say, say the date again.
So the twentieth is the inauguration?
January twentieth, yeah.
It's Wednesday, right?
Yep.
So instead of having our meeting on, what day do we decide to have the meeting on?
Nineteenth.
We just left, we just left it alone. So instead of having it on Tuesday, if we could have it on Thursday so that I'll be back that day to, to participate in the meeting. But I'd like to make an effort to go to the inauguration this year.
Thursday, January twenty-first.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Good with it. Any objection to that? Okay, great. Thank you. Chris, do you have a?
I just have one thing to close the day. I know I told a couple of you that we were looking into the item at Las Vegas Boulevard and Almond Avenue. Don't have an answer tonight, but I will have one tomorrow.
This is with regard to the adult toy store?
Correct. I just didn't want to let anybody down that I didn't have something to them before the end of the day. Otherwise known as Hickory Sticks BBQ.
Okay. Anybody else have any, any further matters of this commission?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
See you on Saturday.